Meeting, calling to order at 6:32 PM. We are re-meeting remotely, and I just want to remind you that this meeting is recorded. All right, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Dolores will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and roll call, please. Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Present.
All right, our next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments are limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. The mayor may request that any group, if there are groups, that you appoint a spokesperson. The item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not posted on the agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agency will not be prohibited, and the city council cannot take action. Do we have any members of the public today that would like to address us on an item? I see Larry Olson has his hand up, so I'll acknowledge you first, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening. The first thing I want to do on behalf of the entire coalition is to thank the mayor and the council for forming the ad hoc committee. And when we were able to meet face to face with county tobacco program staff, and a couple of us from the coalition, it was productive, and we appreciated that. We discussed many things, but among the things that I think would be very appropriate for your decisions and action on the ordinance is that Prop 31, which is out there to pass or not to pass, is a law that, yes, it would help very much in the statement of the fact that those flavored tobacco products are banned. However, the law doesn't provide any oversight, funding, any structural direction, or any kind of staff manipulations that would bring about a structure that could enforce it with any dignity. That's still going to fall, that's still going to fall on the counties and the large municipalities to provide that. There was some concern voiced about what actions the school has taken, and spent a good deal of time getting in touch with schools and speaking to them at the start of a new year, because the students have had all summer to be on their own, and this is either an opportunity or an inhibition or whatever. And yeah, the problem is really out there. Wanted to again report that the schools are doing the best to enforce and follow the policies they have, and there are instructional programs. Mark Fierro, who spoke at the presentation four weeks ago, is really the prime mover in that and is invited from school to school to do just that. However, they need the help of the outside agencies to protect them. The schools take what comes to what comes to them, and their goal is to have a appropriate, calm, structured area where kids do not have to worry about, I have an addiction and I need to get to that bathroom or wherever so I can have my fix, or the things that come with the disruption caused by kids being kids and having this problem. The other part of that was that in speaking with this, with the leadership of the county and having not yet a direct communication with our district attorney, but having talked with him a bit a few weeks ago out at Casper, the district attorney's office is ready to respond. Should any action out in violation of the code be necessary, it won't be swept aside. And I appreciate your time. I urge you to please put the ordinance on the agenda for October 12th and give us a chance to hear how you feel. We hope that all of you will say yes to this, and it's valuable for your community, but we really look forward to having a Willets, which is safe and healthy. And with that, I'll say thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Do we have any other members of the public? Now would be your opportunity to speak to an item that is not on the agenda. All right, having heard no others, I will move on to item three, public matters. And the first thing we have is an update from Mendocino County Third District Supervisor John Hascheck. Welcome, John.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members, city manager, city council, so I really appreciate having, having this opportunity to talk about some of the issues that the county is up to and how it relates to Willets. So first of all is, you know, the Justice Center has been sitting vacant to the top floor for a long time, and, you know, the cannabis department needed extra space for their employees, and so the board gave direction for the cannabis department to move to the Justice Center upstairs, and that will bring in about 20 or so employees who will be, hopefully, some of them will be from Willets. I know some people who work in the cannabis department are from Willets, and there will be opportunities for employment there, and also they'll be eating lunch and providing some economic boost, and the people who come into the department hopefully will be spending some money in Willets. So I hope that it's a, it's a good thing, and that it's, you know, until, well, we need to get these people to their state licensure before June 30th of 2023, and so that's why we need the staff up, and, and that's why that, the Justice Center is needed for that. So that will be happening, I guess, in the, hopefully, you know, within a month or so. Okay? I guess City Manager Bender is going to have a meeting with the CEO and figure out the logistics of how that will happen. Yeah, I'm on the Great Redwood Trail Agency Board, and we had a meeting last Monday about the, the master plan and the community engagement program that they'll be doing, and it will, they'll start to roll that out the first part of the year, and they hope to have the whole, the master plan and everything done by, I think, November of 2023. So, and that will require a lot of engagement with the property owners all along the route, and certainly they're focusing on Mendocino County, and our area has a lot of stake in this, this Great Redwood Trail. Okay? Measure P, which is the quarter cent tax for, for fire and fire safety and fire prevention. I know that Scott Craddy from Mendocino County Fire Safe Council and Fire Chief Carter are on the line, so I'll let them address most of it. I'll just say that if it's passed, and Measure O, which is a library tax, that right now we're paying five eighths of a cent for the, between the library tax and the Measure B, which is a mental health tax. So between those, we're paying five eighths of a cent, and if both Measure O and Measure P are passed, it will be revenue neutral. It will just be redirecting that tax into other, you know, the libraries and the fire departments and the county fire safe programs. So, you know, I totally support it. It was unanimously supported by the board, so, so that would be, there's no increase to the taxes if both O and P are passed. And then there was a question about homelessness and concern about the increasing homelessness in the Willets area, and I checked with, with people from social services at the county, and they say that Building Bridges Program, which is in Ukiah, it's still open, and it's providing both shelter and services. And then there's also Ford Street, which has shelter for families with children, that's in Ukiah. And then Manzanita Services is still open in Willets, and that provides services and support. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, that those services are still available. And, and then lastly, on October 9th, I, you're probably aware of it, but there's going to be, the Blue Zones rollout for northern Mendocino County, it's going to be at the Rec Grove at 1 o'clock from 1 to 4. And then at the county museum across the street, there's going to be an opening for recognition of the Hispanic community and contribution in Mendocino County, and the Westra Alianza from Willets is going to be showcased there, and there's going to be a whole exhibit about, you know, the Hispanic community in Mendocino County at the museum. That starts at 1 o'clock, and then at 2 o'clock, there's going to be the candidate forum at the Grange. So, so there's a lot happening on that day. I don't know why everyone picked October 9th, but that's, sometimes that's what we have to deal with. So, so anyway, if there's any questions or anything, certainly here to, and you can always contact me at hascheckj@mendocinocounty.org, or my phone number is 707-972-4214.
Okay. Do, does any council member have any follow-up questions for Supervisor Hascheck? Councilmember Strong?
I just wondered if either Scott Craddy or Bill Carter wanted to add anything about Measure P.
Bill Carter, I'm here. You guys hear me okay?
We are.
All right, I want to thank you guys for having us here tonight. Um, I was going to start with Mr. Craddy. He's going to give us a kind of a broad overlook of Measure P, and then I'd like to chime in at the end there, answer any questions you guys have for the department, use of the funds or our needs for the funds, and a few fine points of why we, we really need these funds. With that said, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Craddy, let him get his, his update, and then I'll tie in at the end.
Thank you for the opportunity and your time. I ultimately hope we can get to an endorsement. I'm not sure what the process is, but we would love to get an endorsement from the Willet's City Council for Measure P, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about it. John's already done a great job of introducing it. It is kind of the no pain way to give essential support that's needed by our fire departments and to get us in the game of fire prevention, which is a mitigation, which is the only way we're ever going to get out of this cycle of worrying about fire year after year. Measure P kind of balances the need to get this done by being a general tax, but is very specific about how it's going to use the money and get done with an accompanying resolution. And there's a very specific allocation of the funds that's already agreed to by the fire chiefs. So there's, you know, it will be very easy to tell if the funds are being used exactly as they were promised to be used going forward. As you know, fire seasons have gotten more intense, and fire departments have been holding on with minimal funding and barbecues for decades now. That is not going to hold forever or for much longer. Equipment costs have been skyrocketing, the cost of the mandatory insurance they need to pay for their volunteers, their workman's comp has been skyrocketing, the, the equipment costs, legally mandated services, and just for one stat to throw in, you know, simultaneously all those costs are going up, what we're asking them to do is going up. In the last five years, the number of fire calls alone have increased 52%, and they've gone up each year. So, so they're steadily increasing, they've gone up by half in, in the last five years. The needs of all the departments, so this will cover all the departments in the county, and their needs are all different, but they're all substantial. I'll just give a couple of quick examples. Westport covers 209 square miles. Their entire operating budget has ranged from between 70,000 to 90,000 a year. About half of that is through fundraising. They have applied to the Mendocino County Fire Safe Council for help with things as basic as being able to buy a pole and chainsaws to be able to help people with clearing around their house. So they have a huge demand on them and extreme needs. The other side of it is, is, for example, in Ukiah, very different needs, but also very substantial. Fire departments, the, the, the rates you all pay for homeowner's insurance are in part based on the insurance service office rating for your fire department, and those things are higher if your fire department can't afford backup vehicles for all its major vehicles, for example, which has been the case with Ukiah forever. So that'll have a really real benefit there. Redwood Valley's new fire chief just came in and ran the numbers and discovered that their department is heading into the red within the next couple of years without additional support. So real needs out there, and this is our only way to get some of the funding, that's not going to be all they ever need, but it'll get a, it'll get them a little bit down the road without raising taxes that people are paying currently. So that's a kind of a super rare opportunity. I'm just going to close with a tiny bit on mitigation. The other substantial thing that Measure P would do is give us our first large chunk of change for mitigation services. And, you know, I can't stress how essential that is. We've, you know, decades ago, we Californians learned that earthquakes are a part of California life, they're part of the environment, and we adjusted how we build things and what we do around that. It has taken us shockingly long to discover that wildfire is also a part of nature and the environment here, and we need to change the way we do things around that, and we can do lots better. You've probably heard of defensible space and home hardening. If you do a really good job with home hardening, the insurance industry studies show that your odds of your home surviving will go up by about 40%. If you do that and a good job with defensible space, the odds of any individual home surviving go up by about 75%. But people don't know how to do those things properly, so that's just one piece of what we're going to be able to start doing, is up the, up the outreach, education, and also importantly, the level of subsidy that people are going to need to be able to start doing the work to make those upgrades and conversions to their houses. And final point that I'll make before I hand it over is, unless we also have a substantial entity that's looking at prevention services, we're going to miss massive opportunities, both at the federal and state level. There are literally billions of dollars that are being allocated for mitigation programs, and it's the counties that have well-planned programs with some documented history and well-defined programs that are going to catch those opportunities. And Measure P is going to allow us to get to the place where we can play in the game with counties that are prepared to, to get that funding. And so anyway, for all those reasons, I urge you to support and endorse Measure P.
I look like I'm frozen. Am I there, guys?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, I'm moving. All right, hey, Scott, thank you for that. He really hit the fine points of this that we expressed across, you know, the majority of the districts in this county. To tie it in a little closer to home, I mean, we're just like everybody else, you know, we're, we're a small department, mostly volunteers. Volunteers are, they're getting harder and harder to come by. We have a great role of volunteers, we really do. We're 35 strong at the moment. The problem we run into is them being available, you know, when the call comes out. It's getting harder and harder. We're working more and more to make a living, you know. The inflation going up over the next year or two is not going to help that at all. We find people working more than one job. We find jobs that don't allow people to respond during work hours. It's tough to send an employee out for an emergency call. That's going to cost you either money or, or production. So our, our main drive here, and I said this in the meeting before, is, is staffing. We need to find an avenue, a revenue avenue, where we can put a few people in the station, maybe not every day, all day, but maybe during times that we really anticipate big, high response volumes, maybe it's holiday weekends, or maybe there's big events going on, bad weather. We've been looking for a way to, to pay volunteers to be here overnight and during the day during weekends where they, they respond right away. You know, the call comes out, the engine stops, and it rolls away. Volunteers come in that are available and staff other engines. This, this revenue is something that I've really been looking for. You know, I've only been here six months as the chief, and one of the things that I was tasked with when I first took this job is finding a way to, to bolster our revenue. And you know, as most of you know, the, our special assessment tax that we all pay through our property taxes is our bread and butter, is what we live on, is the one we can count on. We have a few other revenues that come in, they're sporadic, and we never know what they're going to be, but the assessment tax we can count on. So, you know, in the near future, and I'm talking very near, I was going to go out and, and go to the tax base and see if I can get that assessment base raised in, in some form. And you know, that's a struggle. It's hard to get anybody else to want to pay more taxes, no matter how good the reason is. This, this measure, Measure P, if this thing passes, you know, I really can probably put that off, either put it off for a good long time, or if we have to still do it, once, once we figure out what kind of revenue this is going to generate, maybe it won't be as bad, maybe it won't need to be as high. It might be a little easier for the, for the public, the tax base to, to absorb. So that's my main drive here, that, and then whatever is left over to bolster a few budgets that are struggling. Equipment, for one thing, I mean, Scott had mentioned, equipment is horribly expensive. It, it's just going up by the day, even just basic fuel. Our, our fuel costs have gone through the roof over the last, you know, six and eight months. Another thing for Measure P for us, you know, that, that I really find to be a support for Measure P, other than not raising our current taxes, we're all going to pay the same taxes, but the traveling public are going to also pay into this tax base when they, when they purchase things, so they stay the night here. And a high number of what we do is for the traveling public. And I really think that is going to be something, we don't talk about it much, I haven't heard nobody talk about it a whole lot, but having them pay into the, to the coffers that support them in their times of need, I think is very, is very important. And that being said, I mean, that's kind of where we're at right now with what we know what's going on with Measure P. We support it, and we hope it passes. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Carter. Do we have questions, comments, or recommendations on a potential action on this item? Vice Mayor Connie? Okay, I'll come back to her. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I would like to move that we endorse, make the motion that be endorse Measure P. So that's, that's a motion I'd like to make.
Okay, and Councilmember Connie was going to make that motion and would like to second that motion. She's having difficulty unmuting. Councilmember Strong?
Is an endorsement actually on the agenda, or is this just a report? No, is it on the agenda? Because I think, oh, and I see Jim Lance is saying no. I would.
Remember, Strong, Mayor Rodriguez, this was an advisory item, it was not, there was no description for an action item by the council. We can put it back on the October 12th agenda.
That's, that's what I was going to recommend. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that sounds good if you could bring that before us, and then we can vote on the matter. Okay. But do we have any other questions or comments? No? Anybody from the public have a question of either Scott Craddy or Chief Carter? All right, having, having heard none, I'd like to go back and finish following up with item 3A. We got a little ahead of ourselves, we were still on 3A when we moved to 3B with Supervisor Hascheck. First, I wanted to thank Supervisor Hascheck for following up on the homelessness issue and letting us know that the shelter is in fact open and will remain open, that's important. And then I wanted to express, at least as an individual, that I hope that the county will be working with the city to address any concerns that we might have for security or any other matter as a new, a new entity in the building that we haven't previously had, and express that I have some concerns about what's going in there, and I know that the cannabis department through the county has had some challenges, and I'm a little concerned that those might become some Willets challenges, so I'm just hoping that there's some separation there, and we would love it if in the future, if the county has something that's going in our city, especially in such an important area in the city center, that maybe we have an opportunity to, to weigh in a little bit and express some, some pros and cons before a decision's made. I know that they were going to be discussing facilities, but I was a little taken back to find out that it wasn't just about surplus facilities, but making a bigger decision about what would go in there immediately. So I just wanted to express that. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I wanted to echo Mayor that in the past, the dispatcher at the PD became the de facto, I guess, receptionist for the building at times, and especially as the county started to vacate, and I would hate to see their time taken away by that program, so some sort of way of facilitating that, that their, their time not be infringed on.
And Mayor Rodriguez? Yeah, I certainly hear your, your concerns, and I will share those with the CEO as this transition happens, and, you know. I, I hope it wasn't a total surprise to people, but with the facilities presentation, we felt like it was the best move for, you know, moving things around and probation needing more space in this area where cannabis currently is, and it just made sense to make this move. And we're going to make it as, we're going to make it as positive as possible.
Okay. I can, I can, I can respect the logistics of it. I, I just hope that you can see where, where, where at least myself as a council member or mayor is coming from. And I see that Councilmember Strong has her hand up, and then we'll go to Council, or Vice Mayor Connie. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest to Chief Lizuraga that the dispatchers keep track of any disruptions or not, or interruptions is what it is, is, you know, if they're serving essentially as receptionists de facto and not, not getting, that anyway, we keep track of that so that if there is an impact on our staff, that we get reimbursed for that.
And we won't have a problem keeping that, and I'm sure it will be something as Councilmember Gonzalez stated, it will be something that will be taken away from their time in, you know, and it's one of the many concerns that I have and that I've expressed to Mr. Bender, and that we are, hopefully will be able to resolve when we meet with the county officials regarding, regarding this move.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the update, Supervisor Hascheck. I do have a question. Last time you were here, I asked if we could get an update on the ongoing conversation that N. Smoamois is having with the county to figure out who's going to take over hazardous waste collections and when those dates will start up again in Willets. I've had several Willets residents ask me when they can take their paint in. Are you able to give us any update on, on how that's progressing?
Right now, what I know is that the hazardous waste is only open in Ukiah. I went there today, and they were. I went there today and they were taking in hazardous waste on Wednesdays, and they have canceled every other, you know, Hazmobile visit to any place else in the county. And I'm not sure about when they're going to get their staffing situation squared around and squared away. So I will, I will check in again to see where we are with that. But it's, it is frustrating because there's a lot of people who don't want to drive their hazardous materials to Ukiah. So.
Yes, and and as you know, you know, there have been several committed volunteers who are working on the cleanup up in Brook Trails, and there's a deep concern that people who don't have an outlet and don't want to pay to take their stuff to either the transfer station or all the way to Ukiah to hazardous waste disposal are just dumping it off the roadside here in our community. So the quicker the Board of Supervisors can act to get a contract in place and restore those services to our community, the better. It's, you know, something that we're, we've been paying for and and we'd like to, we'd like to see it finalized and restored.
Right. And just for an update on that Brook Trails situation that I reported to the Brook Trails Board yesterday, that on October 18th, there'll be a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors meeting at nine o'clock in the morning to close off Dogwood Terrace and Dogwood Lane. And that's up in Brook Trails, which, because there's been illegal dumping and other illegal activities in those areas. And we got support from the sheriff, we got support from the fire department up there in Brook Trails and the Highway Patrol.
Thank you.
Strong.
Yes, I just wanted to add to that, that at our meeting two weeks ago, I did report on what it, what was going to happen at the meeting of the MSWA Board that was the following day. And basically, what I reported is that the contract negotiations with CNS are ongoing. We don't have a written document yet, but the negotiators are definitely going to insist on restoring the services to the outlying areas, including Willets. And that is supposed to be part of what is funded by the tipping fee and whatever grants MSWA gets. And I think that we're on a path to restore the services, but we definitely don't have staff at MSWA to do any of the remote. They only have, I think, one vehicle and it's on its very last legs that can even go to the remote sites. And we only have one authorized driver. Anyway, it's been on everybody's concern and including the MSWA Board. And I'm sorry that it's, you know, that it has meant a disruption of service for such a long time. But we're working on it, and I hope by this next meeting, we will have a contract that that will address that.
Madge, can I also add that there have been, I have received multiple comments from community members that they hope that whatever contract is finalized with CNS, that it does have some provision for the cleanup of these illegal dump site areas around the county. I mean, anytime you talk to someone about these, they know of five more places that are just as bad. And there seems to be kind of a confusion as to what the real charter of Mendo Recycle was, whether they were just to do the hazardous waste, you know, paint can collections, or if they were tasked with going out and cleaning up these sites. But these sites really bother people in our community. You know, we live in this beautiful area and to feel like these known areas of dumpage are just being ignored because no agency wants to take responsibility for it, isn't cutting it with the voters, and they have a right to get services that they pay for. So I certainly hope that you will be aggressively pushing that with the entities involved and and hopefully get some some clear cut delineation of whose responsibility those cleanups will be going forward.
I I will tell you that I have heard at least one comment that that wasn't in MSWA's list of required duties, but it sure should not just fall into the cracks. It either should be MSWA or the county, and I agree, and I'll, I'll look at that. I'll report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Strong, since we have Hascheck here and this was the his part of his presentation this evening, is there something that he could do that would help advocate for improvement in this area? That we haven't already discussed? Anything more specific?
He is not, I don't, John, you're not, you're not part of the MSWA Board. It's, so I I think he should be in touch with the MSWA Board members that are the county reps. And then I will, I will keep John advised of whatever challenges are coming up with that. We talked pretty frequently, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you Supervisor Hascheck for being here today.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. We have no enactment of ordinances before us today, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have one item, the City Council Minutes for September 14th, 2022. And I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval. I did give Dolores a couple of small corrections, and I'm sure those will be part of it.
A second. It's all a seconds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I did, I did notice how detailed Dolores's notes are. So she's, I know she's really trying to cover the body of what it is we're speaking of. So thank you for making that effort. It's been noted. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody who want to comment on our consent calendar, Council Minutes? All right, call for the vote. Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie. She says yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. Sorry, she's having difficulties cutting out, but she says please count her as a yes. All right. Monthly activity reports, we have none before us today. And commission agencies and authorities, no business before us. I see here that we do have present members of the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm going to move on to the City Manager Reports and Recommendation and turn it over to City Manager Brian Bender for both items A and B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so what we have here tonight is an opportunity for the City Council to review, consider a standing agreement that authorizes the city to send an allocation of the TOT, the trans, the TOT lodging tax to the Chamber of Commerce, the Willets Chamber of Commerce for activities noted in the agreement, which basically stems down to promotion, marketing, economic development initiatives that was defined in the agreement. I do want to, before I get into too far into the details here, I do want to acknowledge that the current agreement, which ran for 10 years, did expire last year. And as on my plate that I wasn't tracking it, that it, I, I thought it was going to be on the 20, you know, 2022, but it was actually 2021. So there's been a time span here where the agreement has expired, and that's one of the things we wanted to correct and identify. So that is not on the chamber's fault, that is mine. So any, any concerns on that front should be directed towards me. So basically, I contacted the chamber and said that we need to revisit this, we need to get agreement, at least a proposed agreement before the council for your consideration. And subsequently, the chamber produced a document that defined that the agreement would be remaining exactly the same terms as the previous agreement, looking at 10 years at 11.11% allocation, divided out over the, the reimbursement would be at quarterly junctions throughout the year, and the responsibilities that the chamber would be, we provide to the, to the council, and then ultimately, the community would remain the same. So that's kind of the known facts that I think everyone at this meeting can concur with. What I recognized, and I know that there's some history here with the chamber and with the council and the community and the business owners within the community and people who are dependent on bringing visitors, attracting visitors to this glorious community, that maybe it's not all perfect and maybe things can be done better. So recognizing that and and trying to give the Chamber of Commerce an opportunity to come, pull themselves out of COVID, to get their staffing situation in line and to come, come forward with a viable plan. What I'm proposing to the council, and once again, this is, this is a proposal that is from the staff perspective to the council, is to keep majority of the terms of the agreement the same, but reduce it from a 10-year to a two-year and essentially allow that two-year window, the opportunity for myself to be involved with the the chamber, to address some of the concerns that the council may have, or at least they express over the last year or two to myself, and to see if the chamber can understand the, what needs to be done, move forward, get their structure in place so they can deliver those services that they, that is identified in the agreement. So that is what is on the table for consideration for the council tonight. The other big provision in there is there, there would be a bi-monthly session with myself and a designated of the chamber, to kind to kind of basically understand where they have been, where they're going, and also where we can also increase opportunities for coordination and communication with other allied agencies and entities within the, both the county and the region. So that's also there. And then ultimately, if the council decides on a two-year timeframe, there's the mechanism where the chamber would have to produce an assessment of what has worked and what has not worked. And I think that would be a good opportunity for the council to see, okay, you know, is there a return on that investment for that TOT allocation? I guess what I'm trying to say at this time, I cannot recommend, I'm not, like I said, I, I don't know enough of the situation. I don't have good, critical analytical data to say that that investment through the TOT has been beneficial for all, all parties. And just a two-year timeframe with some criteria in place would allow me to give a clear assessment to the council on how the chamber is working and utilizing those funds.
Do we have a member of the Chamber of Commerce that would like to to give a short introduction or speech or comments?
Yes. Sabrina Slisakavosnica, President of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here with our board. We were hoping to be able to see each other, but due to technical difficulties, we weren't able to. So we're just doing this by phone. So first of all, good evening, City Manager Brian Bender, City Council members. I want to thank you for your service to our community and this opportunity to address the council this evening. At this time, I wanted to introduce our board members and volunteers, myself as Lisa Kavosnica, Tim Wesby, Linda Givens, Chuck and Jill Praseko, John Kavosnica, Lou Salea, Davina Sentak, Marty Guptel, and Ethaniel Flores of the ABC Opportunities. The chamber has had many changes over the past few years from the loss of our executive director, restrictions put in place due to COVID, and coordinating and training of new volunteers, which has definitely affected our operating hours. We understand that there has been some concerns regarding the chamber and our relationship with the city and the city council. We are here as a board to relieve some concerns and questions as we move forward together. Our board is diligent in supporting local commerce. We have implemented a focus on supporting local businesses and service groups in our community. One of the things we are currently restructuring is our membership dues to make it more affordable for all. But what it comes down to is the funding from the TOT has been reinvested into the community, such as the Noyo Theater, the Willets Weekly, Willets Frontier Days, the Ranch Rodeo, Claws for a Cause, Shop Small Saturday, Brews and Blues, our annual Willets Car and Bike Show, Willets High School Silver Grad, and the Willets Center for the Art. We consider all requests and are glad to help out with funding or participation within our guidelines if it's beneficial to the health and the wellness of our community. Current projects that we are working on are the means to put a banner to advertise across the lower part of Main Street to promote Willets's businesses and upcoming events, which are, we are working currently with the city to install. Upcoming events that we have are Harvest Moon Celebration, which will be Saturday, October 22nd, the Shop Small Saturday, which will be the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It kicks off the holiday shopping season for local businesses. And we are also involved, the tree lighting ceremony that's on December 3rd down at the museum. The Willets Chamber of Commerce thanks you for your continued support and guidance as we enter into a new contract. Your support of the Willets Chamber of Commerce will help ensure the success of local businesses and economic development in Willetts. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I guess this is the time to ask.
Yeah, I guess, Lisa, into the chamber, thank you for coming tonight. My question to you is, the recommendation put forward by the city manager, is that something that you guys can live with for now? I mean, I, I myself feel like I get it, COVID happened, it affected a lot of things. You guys have had, I guess, not even going to call it a run of bad luck, but it's any organization that's gone through what you guys have gone through in the last couple of years, it's really hard. But ultimately, from our end, it's, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to show that we're being duly diligent with their money. And it sounds like what was presented to us tonight by the city manager is a, a good roadmap for you being able to showcase what you're, you're doing and how you're spending the people's money. Do you feel that that's a fair assumption?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, that's, that's my question.
We can revisit, you know, several of the things that we've talked about, but yes.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, I just want to make a element of this proposal or this amended agreement clear. I did have the opportunity to meet with two members of the chamber yesterday. If the council agrees to the two-year period, the intent here is not to keep rolling in a, you know, one, two, or three-year interval. It's basically a two-year on the table now, and then if everything is, you know, receives a green light within the end of approaching that two-year, that we put on the table an eight-year or a six-year or something, blow it out beyond the two years. The two years is essentially a trial phase to allow the chamber to get their house in order, get their staffing in place, and allow myself to report back to the council and the general public that the TOT is being correctly applied to the stated goals and objectives.
Okay, are there any other council members with comments?
I wanted to just ask, in the current contract or the, you know, the proposed contract, is there an annual presentation from the chamber to the city council? Is that part of our usual agreement? I think it is, but I don't have it in front of me. It is, I see nodding of heads.
We would like to propose as the chamber to do a quarterly reporting.
That's wonderful. I agree with that. You know, I really am happy that Brian has instituted these monthly reports from our different staff departments, and I don't expect that we need that from the chamber. But I think frequent check-ins are really helpful to keep communication lines open and to keep the city council informed of what's going on. So I like. So I like this approach.
We completely agree.
All right, I'll go ahead and take a turn. First of all, I want to thank you. I know that you're volunteers, and so I do appreciate your time and effort. Like with many organizations, it's very tough to find volunteers to step up to the plate. So first and foremost, thank you. And then I had a quick question. As I was looking through the financials, I know that there hasn't been much staff there, but I was trying to understand what for the Chamber would go under professional fees, because there was a significant allocation for approximately the same amount as the TOT, and just trying to help the public understand what the TOT dollars are being spent on. As I'm looking through the income and expense, seeing that it doesn't appear that the events are really the body of what the expenses, they seem to be bringing in income, but not so much in the expense category, but I did notice a large sum for professional fees that didn't relate to payroll. Could you, is there, can you elaborate on that a little bit, so we can understand what services are provided?
Tim Wesby.
So my name is Tim Wesby. I'm the Treasurer for the Chamber of Commerce, and professional fees basically stopped being paid out as of February of 2021. Professional fees were the salary of our Executive Director, who is unfortunately no longer with us, and he was a sublet contractor that got a flat fee every month. And when he had passed, the professional fees stopped. So we are on all volunteer staff, so the professional fees that you're seeing are only for the years of 18, 19, and 20, and 21, those had stopped. We had only made two payments of $4,000 a month in his name.
Okay, all right, I understand now. It was, it was, it was recorded rather than as compensation, it was recorded as professional fees, but essentially this, very similarly. Okay, that makes sense. All right.
It was, it was income, but we did not have to pay unemployment tax and workman's comp and all that, because he was a stublet contractor and took care of his own insurance and taxes.
Okay. That sounds like more of a tax question than it is a City Council question, so I think that answers my question. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, I'm trying to split my screen here, but in the 21-22 budget, I also noticed that there was, I can't get it back up in front of me, marketing expense, there was a very large, like $11,000 or $12,000 for just marketing, and I wondered if that could be detailed a little bit, since that's a pretty big chunk of money.
So I believe the marketing part of it is going to be our advertising through Willets News, through the Noyo Theater. We also have ads in the 101 Things to Do for Mendocino County. We also have an ad that we did in the San Francisco Giants Program and the San Francisco 49ers Program.
Is there any way to track the effectiveness of different kinds of marketing? Are you able to do that?
I am not to know the effectiveness, meaning how many more people came to town because they saw that article? No, I don't.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. I just, it was, I just noticed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before I move to the public, are there any other Councilmembers with comments or questions? And our Councilmember Vice Mayor Connie has a 30-second delay before she can unmute, so I'm just giving her a moment in case she has any questions or comments. No comment, she says. Okay. All right, I'm going to move to the public. Are there any members of the public that have questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, Member Gonzalez had his hand raised.
Oh, I thought it was still up for murder. My apologies. Go ahead.
Actually, I'll let your public comments go first. I was going to make a motion, but I was waiting for, to try to put my hand out again.
Sorry, that hands up and down, I'm sorry, Jerry. Do we have any members from the public that want to address us on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Council and turn it over to Councilmember Gonzalez.
I would like to move staff recommendations to adopt the two-year agreement and go forth with the City Manager's plan.
Strong?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments before we call for the vote? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
No.
Mayor Rodriguez?
I have concerns, but I'll vote yes on the two-year. All right, moving on to our next order of business this evening is actually verbal reports. That's, I'll turn it back over to you, Brian.
Thank you. So one item, and I'm going to point to City Attorney Lance as well. Member Strong asked for some clarification on the recent changes to the Brown Act, AB 2449, and what the implications are. Basically, in a nutshell, it does limit how hybrid meetings are conducted, how they can be arranged, how they can be scheduled, who is eligible for that, and how the jurisdiction needs to manage that. So Jim, do you want, do you have any additional comments there?
Well, I just would note that for two and a half years, we've been meeting remotely, virtually, and that started in 2020, I think March of 2020, by executive order of the Governor. That lasted about a year and a half, and then September of 2021, AB 361 was passed, and that allows us to continue to meet remotely. And that was by resolution that had to be renewed every 30 days, and so that's what we've been doing for the last year and a half, just about. And that, and that AB 361 expires on January 1 of 2023. And so this new bill, AB 2449, has been signed by the Governor in recognition that the current law is about to expire on New Year's Day. And this past year and a half, we've been operating under emergency circumstances, but starting January 1st, it'll be basically the post-pandemic teleconferencing rule for non-emergency conditions. And what this does, what this does is eliminates some of the requirements that exist now in the Brown Act regarding remote participation. All of you have attended Brown Act conferences and seminars, where you've been told that if you want to participate in the meeting, but you're in a conference in Sacramento or wherever you're at, that you've got to have your address posted in the agenda where you're going to be, you've got to have it posted outside the door where you're going to be. Members of the public can come and join you and can communicate with the City Council remotely at that remote location that you're at. And so AB 2449 eliminates those, basically there are five requirements for meeting remotely, and it eliminates those, and it puts some conditions on meeting remotely. It can only be done for a good cause, or it could be done in a situation of an emergency, and both those clauses are defined in the Act. And, and there's limitations on how often you can do it. No member of the City Council could, either by way of just cause or emergency, meet remotely for up to more than three months, nor can you do so by more than 20% of the meetings within a calendar year. And so these requirements of posting at the remote location, they're gone. You may do so. Oh, and the other requirement is, this is only a minority of the members who can do this, and the remaining three, the majority, must meet in a fixed location personally, so that there's a quorum personally present. And the member meeting remotely has to have the ability to participate visually and audibly, and that's about it in a nutshell.
Gonzalez?
A question for Jim. So hypothetically, if I came down with COVID and said, I want to do this, I don't have to notice ahead of time, I can just call Brian and Dolores and say, hey, I don't want to give you cooties, and so therefore I'm coming in remotely?
You can, you have to notify as soon as, as soon as it is practically known to you, as soon as you can. And, and a health condition, having a contagious illness is one of the factors that qualifies, I think, as a good cause. And there are other emergencies, like you have to babysit a child or a grandchild or care for another family member or something, that's an emergency situation. But in that case, it has to be voted on by the City Council, and your participation remotely has to pass by a vote of the Council.
And is it true, too, that you can only use that three times in the calendar year?
I think you're.
I saw that in there as well.
Yeah, I think you're correct, right.
Councilmember Strong?
But it also says that if someone does, with good cause or emergency, attend remotely, that their attendance has to be both visual and audio to the fixed location where the meeting is occurring. Do we have the capacity to do that?
Well, that's a technical question that I don't know the answer to, but if you have a laptop with a camera on it, I suppose you could do that.
And at City Hall, there would just be a laptop up there showing the remote person?
Yeah, I don't know the details of the, of.
It's a good question.
How it will occur, but just can summarize what the law says.
Thank you.
We can make allowances, but I think fundamentally, like we know, this is our last virtual meeting. We're going to be rolling into in-person, so hopefully COVID doesn't return, and we can meet and conduct our affairs in person.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Connie, and then Stransky.
Jim, you mentioned that if a Councilmember, for instance, is out sick with COVID, the rest of the Council had to vote on whether that person wasn't going to attend? Did I hear that correctly?
No, I think, you're probably refreshing, looking at my notes, but I think that the situation of having a contagious illness is good cause, is not dependent upon a vote by the Council, but something that qualifies as an emergency, which is not having COVID or something of a contagious disease, is subject to a vote of approval by the Council.
When would that vote occur?
That's a good question. I was trying to understand that, and I think it would occur at the actual meeting where the member's going to be absent.
It states in there that the first order of business would be that.
But what if the Council voted no and the person isn't there, then what happens?
Well, then you still have a quorum physically present at the City Hall, so I guess, I guess you'd go forward with your quorum, and the absent member would participate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's the critical aspect of this AB 2449, is that there's a quorum based within the jurisdiction that's meeting in person. That's what drives it.
Got it.
Councilmember Stransky? Did Dolores have her hand up for you?
She had it up for me, actually. Would I still have to set up an MST's meeting for each meeting for the possibility of this happening?
I'm sorry, I don't know what an MST meeting is.
The platform that we're using right now, I have to set up those meetings in order for you guys to join. So is that something that would have to be set up and then posted on the agenda prior to the possibility of a Councilmember not being able to attend?
I'm sorry, I really can't answer that question. I don't know.
Okay, I'll look into that a little bit.
I imagine the weeks that follow, we're going to get more and more commentators posting things and giving guidance on this, probably the League particularly.
Okay.
Yep. The League hasn't reproduced any or released any guidelines.
All right, City Manager Bender, do you have anything else for your verbal report?
One, and it's one of the joys of the job when I get to call out a team member, maybe I can lighten up the discussion a little bit tonight. I just want to point a clarification. I want to direct, you know, the recognition where it's rightly due. So the pickleball, pickleballer group, very active, very aggressive, and their activities within the city, and that's rightly so. We want to accommodate them. They were out of commission for a while with the lights at the tenants' courts being down, and we were able to get them configured, the lights configured, at least to accommodate some usage for the evenings. And I received a very nice card thanking me for this effort, but I want to direct that to our building official, Davey Bolz. He's the one who was working with the contractor, he's the one who got them out there. He was the one who understands what's actually happening with the lights, and it's a problem there. So I thank the acknowledgement that the pickleballers provided. It was, you know, it was nice, but once again, it was Davey's responsibility. Davey followed the instructions to get this going, so I just want to point that out. So I'm glad the pickleballers are happy, I'm glad we are accommodating them. They're, you know, doing what they do best, is just whacking that ball around, so thank you, and thank you for, Davey, for following through. That's what I have.
Can we get a city team together? A little stress relief?
You know, the only thing I can do in a tennis court is play deck hockey, that's about it. Pickleball is outside my scope.
All right. Okay, let's see, moving on to, moving on to a presentation by the Finance Director regarding audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, and I'll turn this over to the presenting staff member, Manuel Orozco, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to check with everybody first. Can you guys hear me well? Okay, I just wanted to double-check. I'm here this evening to present the results of the 1920 audit, along with the financial highlights of the General Fund, so let me go ahead and share my screen here. See if I got that in there. Okay, does everyone see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. So every year, the city has the important task of providing financial statements to the Council and the citizens of Willetts, to assure that we are reporting our financial position in accordance with the generally accepted principles, or GAAP, as we nerds call it, and which we, and that assures us that we have proper. and which we, and that assures us that we have properly accounted for the public funds that we have been charged with managing. This presentation is on the annual fiscal, financial report for fiscal year 1920. The unfortunate delay was in reporting is due to the vacancy of my position for the last couple of years prior to my coming in. However, it is my goal to catch the city up within its, with its obligations to provide the next two years' worth of financial, which would be fiscal year 2021 and 2122. I chose a road trip theme because it seems appropriate, given that we're looking back so far back and everything. So, um, it seems like a review of old times. So here we go. Uh, the city's financial statements were audited by Moss Levy and Hart Team, LLP. The audit team was led by Bin Zheng. And the firm leads with the financials and opinion that the city's financial statements are fairly presented and in conformity with the general fund. The general fund is the main operating fund of the city and used to account for and report all financial resources, not accounted for and reported in any other fund. We will start looking at the general fund and will actually only be looking at the general fund through the lens of the revenue received for this, this, for this year. So, as for the general fund revenues, we have a pie chart showing the amounts received for each revenue type. They are sales and other taxes and the amount of 1,648,802, which is 31.05% of the total revenue collected. Business license taxes is in the amount of 1,000, 147,149, which is 2.77 of the total revenue collected. Franchise fees are in the amount of 341, 304,661, which is 5.74%. Transcendence occupancy tax, or TOT, is in the amount of 361,935, which is 6.82% of total revenue collected. Other taxes are in the amount of 422,750, which is 7.96% of total collected. License and permits is in the amount of 142,000, which is 612, sorry, 142,612, which is 2.69% of total amount of revenue collected. Interest in the amount of 26,605, which is a half a percent of total revenues collected. Uh, charges for services in the amount of 877,001, and that's 16.52% of total collected. Intergovernmental funds are in the amount of 851,278, which is 16.03%. And property taxes in the amount of 431,534, which is 8.13% of total amount connected, collected, sorry. Oh, and also other revenue of 95,430 was also collected, and that is a whopping 1.8%. So additionally, this next slide shows a table that lists the change of revenues from year to year. This shows fiscal year 1819 and 1920. Most notably is the increase in cannabis taxes. It is listed as other taxes and it showed an increase of 142,682 for that year. I mean, know that in subsequent years from now, uh, from this particular period of time, it'll actually start to decrease. But it's interesting to look at it from this lens right now. Charges for services increased as well, and the larger components of that were construction and encroachment permits and overhead and administration charges to other funds. And, uh, intergovernmental, which are pass-through funds, uh, those also increased. And it looks as though, for the most part, those were for redevelopment and BLF and other state revenue. Those are kind of increases, pass-throughs across the board. Most of the change is of those three revenue sources. And I'll leave it over here for just a second. If anybody has any questions on this chart, go ahead and ask.
Well, I was just wondering, uh, why did the licenses and permits drop, um, so dramatically?
The licenses, yeah, from, it's unknown at the moment exactly what it was that made that drop. Um, it could be various numerous factors. Uh, unfortunately, I can't really tell by the number of, it's just, it seems like it across the board, it just dipped. And I'm not 100% certain as to why it happened to be not, I didn't, I wasn't around at that point in time. So I have no frame of reference as to why that happened. Um, perhaps somebody else may, I, I can look into it and get back to you on exactly why that would be happening. But it takes some research to figure that out.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's like, is it mostly construction permits, land use permits? Or is it, I just don't know what, you know, what the components are, but thank you for looking into it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was mostly, yeah, the encroachment permits and things like that, if I remember correctly. All right, so we move on to the general fund expenditures. I prepared a slide for this visual demonstration on where we, each of our general fund dollars go. So, uh, with this, every dollar that we spend is broken up by, uh, multiple different parts of the general fund, which is general government at 32.7%. Public safety, it takes up about 48.2% of our fund, or of our budget, or, or actuals. Planning is 6.9%. Uh, public works is at 4.6%. Community services is 3.6% of our, every dollar spent. And parks and recreation is a 4%. And just so you know, general government includes city council, city manager, finance, legal, human resources and other non-departmental costs. So additionally, this slide shows a table that lists the change of expenditures from one year, fiscal year 1819 to fiscal year 1920. Most of this is, um, most of the decrease is due to a great effort in pulling back from the increase in planning and public works capital outlays. But it looks like at some particular point in time, it was recognized that we were losing, or we were lo- losing a lot of money in terms of not having enough revenue coming in and having money going. The interesting thing with this is that, well, we, we can go on to that later. But the point is, is that for the most part, it looked like there was a great effort in order to reduce costs associated with operating expenses in the planning and public works mostly. And that was because they had increased year prior. Uh, capital outlays also decreased, which basically we didn't buy anything new. Um, I think the last thing that we bought was the 251,000 appears to be a, um, street sweeper. Does anybody have any questions on this? Okay. Moving forward, this slide shows a five-year comparison of the net increases in which, uh, of expenses. And it shows that spike of 14.7% fiscal year 1819. And that mainly was an increase in planning and public works costs. And those then got pulled back in the next, or the following year of 1920. You can kind of see that there was, there were major decisions being made to be able to pull back and not spend nearly as much in anticipation of, of reduction of revenue. This is before even the pandemic came up. We have the benefit now of hindsight of what may happen, what happened after and during the pandemic and everything. But at the time, we didn't know. And, and when we take into the, to account all these expenditures, we bridge these two slides together and have the revenues and expenditures form with other finance resources, which is a transfer out to landfills to cover the cost of post-closure activity. And this gives us a net increase in our fund balance of 338,027. This final slide shows us the ending fund balance. The beginning fund balance was 2,471,327. The net change in fund balance, that 338,027 that I showed you earlier. And that made the ending fund balance for fiscal year 1920, 2,809,354. One thing to keep in mind in this is that this is the benefit of having everything, including all the projected revenues, uh, known after the fact. So at the time, it looked as though a lot of these revenues came in after the fiscal year ended. So there was real concern at that point, where we were running low on funding. And it looked like we were running, uh, we were using up more than we were taking in. Thankfully, through efforts of council, we were able to kind of pull back on a lot of our spending and do other measures in order to be able to try and right-size the ship. Looking to the future, uh, tomorrow, we'll be starting a finance committee and we'll be engaging in discussions regarding our reserve policies for various needs, including in the future and also a financial crisis also, which is something I want to introduce in order to be able to, to look ahead and not be caught off guard in the future of any financial downturn. So with that, that ends my presentation. Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing now.
Gonzalez, could you remove the screen too, so we can see each other a little better? And thank you, Manuel.
Manuel, I, just a quick question. When do you anticipate, starting on the, uh, on the next, are you gonna take, uh, the next two years at the same time or tackle one and then the next?
I'm taking the next two years at the same time. I am a blood for punishment. So, yeah, we are gonna be starting at the middle of October and we're gonna do successive audits. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a painful slog, but, um, I'm hoping that by the time we're through with it, we can kind of free and clear, get ourselves free and clear so that we can move on towards moving our finance, into a new financial software. There is no way that I can, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hold on, I was gonna say that, and this should have us ready to go for when we do our next budget. Is that, I'm hoping that all of those will be behind us at that point then?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other council questions? Anybody? Go ahead, Matt.
I just wanted to, uh, see if we could get a copy of those, um, sent to us. Not necessarily hard copy, but just so that I have a record.
That is already been discussed and you will receive copies and the PowerPoint will also be posted on the website.
Vice Mayor Connie has a comment?
Thank you. Um, Manny, I just wanted to thank you for this. Um, you walked in at a time when we had been without a finance director for far too long. And, uh, what you walked into was, uh, to put it lightly, a mountain backlog of work. And you've just, uh, dived in and you've had a positive attitude. And, uh, I just, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. It's, we're, we're, I, I think we can all agree, we are just so grateful for your presence and your willingness to, um, help us right this ship. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, well said. All right. Let's see, this was just a presentation, so no action this evening. All right, uh, are there any members of public that would like to comment on this? All right, having heard none, I'm gonna move forward with the department monthly reports. Airport?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Uh, I do have two further updates from this report. We did receive today from Malaco, the data survey on, uh, both the reach hangar and Mike Smith's hangar. We will be sending those on to Mead and Hunt so that they can forward, uh, finalize the documents with the FAA to make sure the placements of these hangars are as they should be. So we are excited to get moving forward with that. Uh, we also received the quotes on having more trees removed at both the north and the south end of the airport and are moving forward with that as well. Thank you.
All right, community development.
Madam Mayor?
Is that you, Greta?
Yes. Can I ask a question of Kathy?
Um, yes.
Kathy, on, on your last few airport monthly reports, it seems like there's been a tentative meeting, uh, for tenants that has been, um, canceled due to no attendance. Are you having concerns that, um, your airport community is not, uh, not showing up for you?
Well, yes and no. Um, normally when we have them, they do show up. I think what happened is the one from last month or in July, excuse me, that we had, um, was right when we transferred over the new email addresses and went to the new system. And I believe that some of them didn't get it. So we did go ahead and postpone that one. And then for last month, there was quite a few of them that were gone. So we're hoping to get back into a swing of it at the beginning of next month.
Okay, I sure hope so, because it seems like staff has done such a tremendous job, uh, working to get that airport really in, in ship shape. And, uh, I, I hope the, the community of users up there is giving you appropriate feedback and, and, uh, yeah, being engaged.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And, and they are, they, they do it in roundabout ways, let me tell you. I, I get messages every now and there going, what's going on? But no, they're doing really well and we appreciate them for all that they do up there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, community development.
Uh, I can pitch hit, uh, Mr. Dooley is, uh, taking the evening off. So if there's any questions on the written report, please direct them to me.
I'm not seeing any questions.
I, in that case, I will take the opportunity to say that, uh, we have mentioned a few times, and I know this is a matter that's dear to the, the council, and, and, uh, Mr. Dooley communicated this last session, that our general plan update is gaining momentum. Um, like was explained, we're on a tight schedule, a very aggressive schedule. Um, and a key aspect of that is making sure the council is informed as we move along. So I do know that Dusty is looking to schedule basically a very elaborate, uh, citywide tour for all the consultants and the experts to come in and help understand, get, you know, boots on the ground, uh, where we are with our community, some of the concerns, some of the development opportunities, and some of the areas that we need to preserve, um, in character. So, uh, once again, I just wanted to pass that along to the council. Um, meetings will be going forward and will, sooner than later, we'll have sessions, uh, um, asking for public participation in that process.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Brian, at some point, um, could we hear from Dusty an update for the public regarding the CCC campus, um, and its progress? A lot of questions out in the community about what's happening over there and what the timeline is.
Copy that, we can do that. Um, I, internally, I have not heard any, um, concerns with their project and their schedule. Uh, they seem to be moving along, but I can, um, get community development to provide you with that, uh, update.
Thank you.
All right, engineering?
Yeah, this is Scott Herman. Uh, just one update. Um, the groundwater resiliency improvement project phase one is moving forward. Uh, it started this week in regards to fusing the HCP pipe together, uh, to prepare for the, um, horizontal drilling, which, uh, is planned for next week to start. Um, all, all permits were approved, um, as well as the, uh, de-watering plan, um, if they encounter any groundwater. And I, I'm available for any questions if you guys have any.
Scott, I'm not seeing any for you this evening, so your report was thorough.
Oh, I was glad. I, I thought I was on mute there for a second. Yes, it was a long pause.
I'm just looking at their faces to see if they have any, uh, have any thoughts for me. That looks like we're good. All right, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, I wasn't at the last council meeting, so I don't know if this was voiced by the rest of council. But Scott, I just wanted to, um, say thank you and job well done to the team up at the water treatment plant. Uh, it could, it had to have been harrowing during the fire and, uh, it just seems like you all handled it wonderfully. So many thanks for that.
Uh, thank you, I will, I will pass it along. Um, and operators, you know, did a phenomenal job up there and whatever cal fire needed. whatever CAL FIRE needed and CAL FIRE has been super good with us in mitigating the, the fire. So, thank you.
You know, Caltrans helped you guys out because you're easy to work with, so I just want to make sure you all take some, some credit for the work and the relationships that you build.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Chief Lizaraga, what's happening with our police department?
Well, happy to report that we're slowly but surely getting our staffing levels up to par, so much so that we've been able to give a couple of our tenure officers the ability to go on vacation and we're also trying to schedule people for some training coming up in the next few months to a year, which everybody is looking forward to. We had a new patrol officer sergeant position start the last few weeks. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, his name is Sergeant Jordan Walstrom, came to us from Humboldt County, is really enjoying the town, the community in, in the work that we've got him doing. So he's, he's had a successful splash down here. Next week, we start a new trainee for our dispatch, one of our dispatcher positions and he is a local man here, lives up in Brook Trails, has lived in the Willis area for the entirety of his, of his life. So we're looking forward to that. We're also hoping that in the next week, maybe two at the most, we have a new police officer starting here as well. He's made it through backgrounds and I'm hoping to get him started in the next week or two. And we have a young lady that we are sending to the academy in, starting in October, October 10th. She'll be attending, it's Delta College Academy in the Central Valley area. Had some good experiences with candidates from Delta College in my prior life and they have a good quality education and training for, for recruits. So looking forward to her attending that and ultimately coming on board with us, which if it's on schedule, it'll be in April of next year. So we're all excited about that and we're continuing to push to have more community interaction with our folks, not always hopefully in a negative fashion, pulling people over, but just stopping and talking to people and building those bridges that we've been talking about for a while now. So knock on wood, we're heading in the right direction and we'll keep, we'll keep at it. And does anybody have any questions regarding the report itself? Getting the same blank stares that Scott Herman got, so that's a good thing.
It doesn't appear there are. I think we're probably all thinking though that we're glad you're there when we need you and thank you for keeping us, keeping us safe and hope that all those out there patrolling the streets continue to stay safe as well.
Thank you. Best of the month.
All right. Moving on to Public Works.
Here I am again. This is Scott. Sorry, the mute got me again. The, just one, one update. The plan is hopefully to have the merry-go-round back in service on Friday and I know that's been anticipated. Unfortunately, Kenan's out tonight. He had no further updates, so I just wanted to pass that on. We're moving forward with it. It's repainted. We're waiting on a bearing to get back and to be able to reinstall it.
Thank you for that wonderful update, Scott. I, I gave a mayor's presentation today to the students over at Blosser Elementary and that was high on their list of concerns is making sure that the city council knows they'd like the merry-go-round back. So they're going to be thrilled to see it out there.
Well, the staff did, did a great job on, on the painting. Looks like the original colors, so it, it should look really good back, back in its place.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I actually had two people come to me at the bookstore to tell me how impressed they were that they saw Public Works out there before the storm, cleaning the storm grate and they just wanted to make sure I knew that. So please pass that along to the crew. It was seen by the public, noted and appreciated.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we had any issues with that torrential two inches and a half an hour, 45 minute rainfall we had there. So yeah, preventative maintenance.
It worked.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
And utilities.
And I will do that one as well. Just one update or actually just a thank you to, I wasn't able to attend last week's meeting either, or last council meetings. A big thank you to CAL FIRE, local CAL FIRE, Howard Forest Unit and Little Lake Fire Department and the other entities that jumped on that, the Walker fire. The second one that flared up on the, what we call Morris Island, unfortunately, there were some trees that were fell in Morris Lake on the edges there and CAL FIRE, super helpful and actually came down, brought their equipment and removed them for us and put them back on the island. So big thank you to them. Drew Rhodes, the incident commander was a big part in that. The other update that I have and I'm really, really, really excited is the Morris valve dam that has been on the monthly report for quite a while now was removed today and the new one should be installed tomorrow.
Woo! All right.
The reason, yeah, the reason it took so long with construction, took this project on pretty treacherous. It's about 125 feet down a side hill. We do have a gate or a climbing ladder there, but just to get the, the 12 inch valve down there and the old one out was very creative. So just want to thank WIF for, for helping the city out again. And if you have any questions on the report itself, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Any, any questions or comments from the public on any of those reports?
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
There's a new entry for this month. There is a finance department report. You skipped over that.
Oh, I sure did. I was so excited about all these other good things and I'll bring it back to Manny. Go ahead and give us the finance report. My apologies.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. All right. All right. My setup is a little bit different because if I was to put on my mic, then it doesn't echo. So I'm hoping to have Apex with that still. As for our monthly report, we started the task of cash reconciliation and anticipation for the audit that's coming up for 2021 and we will be doing it on, through 2122. Also, long-term debt reconciliation. We provided a compensation report to the state that was backlogged, did super utility billing. We presented the investment policy and had council accept it, completed the CEPA test for single audit eligibility and constructed a letter for the audit so that we can distribute that over to our interested parties for long-term, or for our debt, for our bond debt. We completely, we are starting the 690 liability reconciliation associated with where our payroll goes into liability. It's been kind of, it's kind of one of those things that needed to be dealt with on a regular basis and it hadn't been touched for two years. So it's kind of, think of it like a big ball of twine. It's all knotted up and I'm just kind of pulling on the strings and getting that untied. SAM registration is complete. We completed that as of last week and it was a great accomplishment because it took a lot of voodoo trickery. Once those registrations go out, it's really hard to get them back on. For the most part, the biggest issue was we were originally registered for the past years as City Hall as our address and so that caused an issue because we're 111 East Commercial Street, not City Hall. You know, and we are at City Hall, but that's not a street address. So that caused issues. That was really hard for the SAM registration people and the cage code and the DLA to get over. And so it, it took some time to get that going, approximately like almost six months. So that was crazy. As for projects, we have an RFP out for a new financial software replacement and we're hoping to get responses by the end of October. We've already received five inquiries associated with it and yeah, so we're looking forward. I've already written out a couple of responses and gathering up those questions as well. I'm going to post those online so that it's there for everybody to see the questions and the answers to know inside baseball. We are actively engaged in conversion from ADP to ACS. We were doing our payroll software over in ADP and it's been kind of a mess ever since we switched over, so we're starting to pull ourselves back now. We've had a couple hiccups for the last like five months and such, just kind of getting ourselves over the hump, but we have ACS working with us now and once we get another permanent person in payroll, we will get started, but we're still rolling, we're just keeping the ball rolling. So there's that. I got prior period adjustments that I got to set in for, that is due in the next couple of days, so we're going to be finishing that fairly soon and then we'll have the 2020, 2021 audit and 2122. So that's, that's it for nutshell and there's a lot more focusing on next month, but yeah. Yeah, we have the audits, CAS 68, compensated absence, long-term debt schedules, I mentioned that, bank recon. We did our reporting for the SLFRF, I like to call it the floor purfer because I don't know why, it just sounded funny. And finance committee is going on tomorrow morning.
All right. Sounds like it's been busy.
Yeah.
Question for Manny?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Will the new financial software tie in with your new payroll with ACS?
It won't tie in with ACS. ACS is our current financial software and so what we're doing is we're pulling it back. We used to have it in ACS, we used to do our payroll in ACS and we moved over to ADP for a reason that probably is no longer valid. And so we're moving it back in so that when we migrate from one system to another, we will be migrating one system, not, not two systems into one. It's a lot more easier.
Perfect. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Did I hear a comment? No. Okay. All right. I'm going to move on to city council announcements, communications and the reports. Before we go to individuals, if we could get a report from our two council members, Vice Mayor Connie and Councilmember Gonzalez about the tobacco retailers licensing ad hoc committee that they serve on? Go ahead, Gonzalez.
We met briefly, I think, for about, I guess, two hours it looked like, I think, last, last week and we did have some pretty good discussion. I personally do not think that we would be ready by the 12th to bring it back. I think, I, I think what I made clear is I wanted to have some folks come speak to the council. I know that there was an email that was sent to me and Greta today. I haven't had a chance to review it from somebody from the Office of Ed and, because I know that was a concern for the council as far as what was being done in the schools. I did have an opportunity over the weekend to speak with Mark Viero at a social event. I ran into him and we kind of put two and two together as to who we were and I told them that I would be interested in he or somebody from his agency speaking at the city council to kind of educate us as to what's being done at the school and who does what. I thought that would be important so that everybody has a pretty good grasp as we move forward. I also, at the meeting, there was a gentleman there from the tribe that does tobacco education and I did ask him to pass on to the local, I guess their tobacco store to, to have them contact me. I wanted to ask some questions and so I still think, unless folks got back to us right away that we, I don't think that I'd be ready for the 12th, but I would entertain talking to some folks if they wanted to get ahold of Brian because that was kind of how we left it. And Brian, you maybe can fill in if I've got anything else I've forgotten.
No, I think you covered it. I mean, my understanding of it was I don't think the committee would be ready to have the item placed on the October 12th agenda. I think you wanted to have another session. I did receive some materials from the county staff that I haven't had a chance to go through it yet, but it's meant for my review and then City Attorney Lance's review as well. So we were working, I'm working on the, the schedule that you were looking to have a meeting about three, four weeks out towards the end of October.
I guess I would just defer to Greta if she has anything else she wants to add.
I just wanted to comment that one of the people who came and spoke at the ad hoc committee meeting from the county, I believe it was Angela, mentioned that, you know, if, if state voters decide to pass 31, which would ban the flavored tobacco statewide, there won't be any mechanism from the state to help enforce the ban. And so from their perspective, passing the tobacco retailer's license ordinance would actually help create mechanism within our jurisdiction. So it would, it would really give us a leg up, but it seemed to me from the meeting that, you know, City Manager Bender and City Attorney Jim Lance and Jerry and I both agreed that, you know, we were sort of wanting to wait to see how it shook out at the state level. We see the benefit of being proactive, but we also want to kind of see where this is all headed in the bigger picture before we start digging into deeply to this. So I, I really appreciated the meeting. I, I felt like it was a very productive conversation, but I agree, I did, my takeaway was not that we would be ready by October 12th to act on the ordinance.
I'll move forward with, if there's no further comment, I'll move forward with the city council reports as well. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you want to report on any other council activity?
Basically, there is a League of Cities meeting. I think I just handed it off to Larry if he can connect up tomorrow. Mariah Turner, who was our representative for our area in, in the, the League of Cities, took a job that required her to resign as a council member for Lakeport and so she's not available. So there's a position that's opened up between, I think it's going to be a Clear Lake council person and a, I think it's our KETA council member that are vying for that position. And so I hopefully pass the baton to Larry because I'm going to be working as a sub tomorrow and I'm not available. It actually came at the last minute that they were going to do this, so that's the only thing I have.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes, I, I kind of already announced a little bit that the ENSWA, Solid Waste Management Authority, did meet on September 15th. We don't have a draft of a contract with the CNS towards privatizing basically most of those services, but they're working on it and I don't believe there was any other, the, the next meeting of ENSWA that- And I don't believe there was any other, the, the next meeting of ENSWA that is scheduled is October twentieth. They might call a special meeting once they have a proposed contract so that we have a little extra time. Because we're hoping to make the transition by the end of the year. And the current staff is definitely over, over their heads. Few, not enough staff to do the work. That's the only agency that I need to report on. That's it.
Vice Mayor Connie?
Um, I attend finance committee meeting tomorrow morning. Our last one did not go. And I also attend MCAG next Monday. And I, this isn't a, a committee that I was assigned to, but I did want to report out that I attended the Willis High School Environmental Club weekly meeting. They invited me to speak last week. And it turns out that they are planning a cleanup in the Willis area. They would like to work on either Bechtel Creek or Brodus Creek. And so I have contacted City Manager Bender, who is talking with Kenan and also the police chief in hopes of helping clear the way for the high school group to do a, a two-hour cleanup in town, which I think will be appreciated by all.
Councilmember Stransky?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. I attended today the MTA board meeting. And we talked about quite a few things that may be relevant. We talked about staffing. And in inland area, we've restored most routes back to where they were before the COVID activity. Although over in the Fort Bragg area, we are still desperately in need of drivers. We have four openings. So if you know anybody who lives on the coast that would be interested in a, in a driving job, we are looking for drivers over there so we can fully restore services over there. We accepted the retirement of Bob Butler from our maintenance department. He's been with MTA for forty-one and a half years. So pretty significant. And the gentleman who's going to be filling his shoes has been with MTA for thirty-eight years. So some longtime employees. Something notable that was discussed is I had mentioned before that the local MTA cutaway bus that we have here is a zero emission vehicle. It's an electric vehicle. And we received our, our first full quarter of savings and figured out the difference. And we are receiving two thousand dollar a month savings in switching from fuel to, to electric, which that's pretty exciting. If you think about two thousand a month times twelve months, that's twenty-four thousand dollars in savings by going green there. So that's wonderful. On the other hand, we did discuss some challenges that although we have a mandate to go to zero emissions, on hot days, we, we have been told, for example, when we had that one, the days where it was really hot, we were told that it was requested of us not to charge our vehicles for that, that three-day period. So we're having discussions about, okay, if we're going to be changing all of our fleet to electric, what, what will be the plan that the state has going forward? You know, if all of our fleet is electric and we can't charge it, we're in a little bit of a pickle there. So reaching out to lawmakers to make sure that they have a plan as they move forward and imposing these mandates for us to switch to zero emissions. We also are putting out, through MCAG, we're putting out an RFP for the Ukiah Transit Center. So you may have heard about the Transit Center. That topic is very much back. And we're working on a grant opportunity for the 2023, 2024. And it's going to be really critical that the public participation participates when it's their time in this grant opportunity because they're finding that other areas who, other communities who've been able to get their transit centers up and going, that it really came down to the public participation, showing that the public really wanted this. Lake County was awarded a grant for their transit center. Us was humbled. And we have, we have, we have a pretty good opportunity at it. So we're hoping that that's something that will move forward. I asked if we, we were awarded a grant, you know, how far out would we be talking about? Realistically, we're talking about, you know, four to seven years from now. Everything takes time. But you got to start somewhere, right? And then, oh, MTA is making plans and there'll be a marketing plan. There's going to be a thirty-day period. They're thinking maybe October fifteenth, but the date hasn't been announced yet, where you'll be able to ride MTA for free for thirty days in hopes that that will increase ridership. And we're paying for it through leftover, leftover LC top funds that we have from 2019 that we need to spend out. And that qualifies. So that's what I have on reports. Greta and I are going to meet tomorrow at nine AM to ask a few more in-depth questions of our finance director Manuel. And then I wanted to bring up a community concern that came before me today. And that is about Bechtel Road. I know when that subdivision went in, I expressed some concerns about making sure that we think about a stop sign or something over there to slow cars down on Bechtel Road. And the issue was brought before me today to make sure that when we have our public safety meeting that we don't forget that they're concerned about the excessive speed that drivers are driving on Bechtel Road.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So that is one of the target areas that is going to be subject to the citywide traffic study. Where we're going to be looking at road design, road usage, volume, speed. And that, like I said, we're going to be getting that proposal out and hopefully retain a consultant to help us through this process before the end of the year.
That sounds wonderful. She, the individual who called did mention that that also seems to be a spot that's prone to having the fire hydrant hit along Bechtel Road.
Unfortunately, we do lose hydrants at that location.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That is all I have. Does anybody have Good and Welfare? Strong?
Yes. Well, two things. One of them is that Well, Willis Economic Localization did sponsor a Energy Future Forum on September twenty-second. And we had Jeff Seifers, who's the CEO of Sonoma Clean Power, and Keith Rutledge, who's the founder, ready and also very active in the fire safe council in Sherwood. And both of them were just excellent speakers and we had some really great questions and answers. And, and what reminded me about that too is that they talk a lot about the times to use the solar power and the times to try not to. So things like charging stations and taking advantage of the lower rates and the need for the state Public Utilities Commission to adjust some of those things so that they could take advantage of when people are feeding power into the grid through their solar installations. And, and then, you know, charge when the use for the power isn't as, as high. So there was some very interesting information there. And I do have a, a video of it that Channel Three helped put together. If anyone would like to, to watch that forum after the fact. And the other thing is, which John Hascheck mentioned it briefly, that on October ninth, which is Sunday at two o'clock, despite the fact that there's two or three other very important things also scheduled for Sunday, October ninth. But from two to five is going to be a, an election and candidates forum that's sponsored by Well, the Little Lake Grange, and League of Women Voters, and Mendocino Women's Political Coalition. At two o'clock, we're going to be talking about measures O and P. And then from three to five, we're going to have the, it turns out now there's eight candidates for the Willis School Board. There's a write-in candidate and then seven that are on the ballot. So that should be interesting for anyone who cares about how to vote for only three open seats with eight candidates. Pretty contested election there. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Just, yeah, go ahead, Greta.
Um, I just wanted to let the council know that on September tenth, Supervisor Mulhern and I hosted a cleanup event in Brook Trails on Dogwood Terrace. It's been the site of illegal dumping for the past couple of years and had gotten just pretty, pretty horrendous up there. We had almost thirty people show up on a very hot Saturday morning. And in four hours' time, volunteers removed over six thousand pounds of rubbish that were taken to the Willis Transfer Station. The fees were generously waived by Jerry Ward. And we had help from Nicholas Landscaping. Residents of both Willis and Brook Trails were there at the cleanup. It was just a tremendous effort, a really good thing to be a part of. And we will be having our follow-up cleanup this coming Saturday to finish the job, hoping to have a, a piece of heavy equipment there to lift the last of the big stuff into the trailers. And Jerry will once again be waiving the fees for us. And then as Supervisor Hascheck mentioned in his report, there will be an item before the County Board of Supervisors on October sixteenth to actually close both of those Dogwood roads, Dogwood Terrace and Dogwood, I think it's called Port. And we have gotten letters of support from all the local agencies to encourage the supervisors to make the decision to do that. And then their County Department of Transportation will close them so they can no longer be used as dump sites. And then from what I understand, Willis area cyclists will be working to potentially tie in trails from the top of those circles down into the Green Belt and to the rest of the hiking and biking trails that they have been stewarding these last few years. So very exciting effort. And I just wanted to thank the residents of Willis and Brook Trails who helped out and who will be coming again this Saturday.
Strong?
I just wanted to thank Greta for her diligence and persistence on, on doing that work and getting those volunteers together. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. And it was mostly because I kept, kept getting emails and messages on Facebook, when are we going to clean this up? Couldn't ignore it any longer.
Love the collaboration between Brook Trails residents and city of Willis. And yeah, it's wonderful. That really is Good and Welfare. Thank you.
Absolutely. And the support from our Ukiah supervisor as well was instrumental. So it was really pretty, made me feel pretty great about our county.
Wonderful. All right. With that, we will adjourn at eight thirty-five PM and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone.